All right. Well, let's get it. Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty. It's six P M. This meeting is called to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off so they don't interfere with our recording equipment or with one of our esteemed colleagues who's going to be calling in. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. After staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We asked if you come forward one at a time. We also are doing some sanitizing in between people coming to the podium, so please allow enough time for us to clean up and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Is there a sign-in sheet? Thank you. We'd like to ask that you maintain a safe distance, keep your mask on at all times during the meeting. When you come up, if you feel like you can speak through the mask, please, you know, if you feel like it's impeding your ability to communicate, remove your mask and say what you have to say. Please keep all your questions and comments to the board, and we'll do the best we can to get your questions answered. All right. The first item on our agenda is item two zero two zero dash one two five. This is zoning case two zero dash zero zero four. Rezoning from R M ten and R fifteen to R M ten conditional for the development of a twelve single-family detached, development of twelve single-family detached homes at a density of seven point five units per acre. This is one point six acres in land lot four eighty-seven. It's known as thirty-six fifty-five Love Street, ten eighty and ten ninety-six Church Street. The applicant is the Martinello Group. Mr. Staub's the background, please. And while I blaze through that, just so you guys know, I think we're having some technical difficulty with our equipment up here, so if you just bear with us, we will get to the presentation as soon as possible.
Chairman Powell, can I make a recommendation to
Sure.
change the agenda up and go to the Wendy Hill request since there's not a, there's not any improvements to that property?
Okay.
There really isn't a need for a presentation.
All right. Very good. All right. So in light of that, we're gonna, we're gonna skip item two zero two zero one two five. We're gonna move it to the second item on our agenda, and we'll start with item two zero two zero three four eight. This is zoning request Z two zero dash zero one zero. Rezoning from F C to L C for the use of a professional office. This is a point two five acres at land lot three seven five, seven twenty-six Wendy Hill Road. Mr. Staub's background, please.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joey Staub, Planner Two with Community Development. This is zoning case Z twenty dash zero ten, seven twenty-six Wendy Hill Road. The applicant is Omocodian Medical Services. It's in Ward five. Existing, yeah. Okay. You'll be hearing it tonight, and your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council October nineteenth. Again, the property is seven twenty-six Wendy Hill Road. It's approximately quarter of an acre. It's currently zoned future commercial and been used as a non-conforming commercial use. Staff is bringing it to you tonight to formalize the zoning to a commercial zoning as limited commercial. This is the future land use map. On either side of the subject property is Neighborhood Activity Center. To the south is Low Density Residential, and across Wendy Hill Road is Land Use's Right-of-Way. This is the survey of the subject property. It's a single-story structure. It's been used as a hair salon, and the applicant is wanting to use it as a professional office. So that's the existing building. This is the access drive on Burbank, and then the parking spaces are access from Burbank. These are pictures of the subject property. And then adjacent properties. So Community Development's recommending approval of the rezoning from F C to L C for professional office on zero point two five acres. We have an answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application. As soon as we get this thing cleaned up. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've never done this before.
Oh, no, no worries. Just tell us a little bit about your business, about what's going on.
Okay, so I'm Dr. Omocodian, owner of Omocodian Medical Services, and also have an urgent care. The property is used as a hair salon, and we were trying to figure out if we could do other things with it, if we're renting it out or opening a practice or an urgent care there, but unfortunately, we're unable to because of the limitations of what we can do with the, with the F C for now. And so we're trying to open up options of what we can potentially utilize the property for.
Okay.
The idea when we bought the property was to have a medical practice, obviously, with him being a doctor, at the location. And with everything that had happened, it just took some time for us to actually put together the rezone, so we just kind of left it as previous tenants were using it for hair salon.
All right.
So we're trying to be able to have that option for us, and in case if space is limitation for us, then we can use it for other purposes besides medical service, like maybe a small retail shop or something like that.
Excellent. So it's just getting this thing into a conforming use?
Correct.
Okay. Absolutely. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward one at a time. Okay. Let the record show there's no one in attendance that wants to speak. All right. Any questions, comments from the board? Then I'd like to entertain a motion. Mr. Bartlett?
Make a motion to approve rezoning request Z twenty dash zero one zero rezoning from F C to L C for the use of professional office.
Got a motion to approve. Mr. Bartlett, got a second. Mr. Rice, all in favor, please vote. All right. The application is approved. I believe that is. Ah, thank you. Mr. Bentley, do we have a vote?
Yeah, I, I vote to approve.
Okay. Thank you very much. The application is approved, seven zero. Good luck in your business. All right. The next first item on our agenda is two zero two zero dash one two five. This is only request Z two zero dash zero zero four rezoning from R M ten and R fifteen to R M ten conditional for the development of a twelve single-family detached homes at a density of seven point five units per acre. One point six acres in land lot four eighty-seven, thirty-six fifty-five Love Street, and ten eighty and ten ninety-six Church Street, the Martinello Group. Mr. Staub's.
Thank you. This is zoning case Z twenty dash zero zero four. Applicant is Martinello Group LLC. Your recommendation will go to council on October nineteenth. This is the zoning map. The, the subject property is an assemblage that includes ten eighty Church Street and then two separate properties to the east. It's approximately one point six acres in Ward three. There's a, three single-family structures on the property now, and the proposal is to build twelve detached single-family residences. The existing zoning is R M ten for the majority of the property, and then the two separate properties are R fifteen. Proposal is to rezone it to R M ten conditional. The future land use for the subject property is medium-density residential, as well as to the north's east and west, and then to the south is residential high-rise. This is the proposed site plan. Proposal is to have a front setback of twenty-two feet, a side setback of five feet, a rear setback of fifteen feet. There'll be a private drive that runs through the property with a hammerhead at the end for fire access, turnaround. The stormwater detention facility will be at the end of the property. There'll be right-of-way dedication for road improvement, sidewalk, and curb and gutter. And we're recommending or requesting two crosswalks, one across the private drive and one across Church Street. So there's a lot of variances associated with this request since it's owned R M ten, which is primarily for multifamily development with a single, single structure or multiple, multi-story structures. Since this is a single-family product, it's not really characterized, it's not really designed for R M ten, but the zoning already allows ten units per acre, so we're trying to work within those parameters. So there's a minimum lot size variance from twelve thousand square feet to thirty-four forty-one square feet. There's a reduction in minimum lot width from a hundred feet to forty-three feet. There's a reduction of the front setback from fifty feet to twenty-two feet, reduction of the rear setback from forty feet to fifteen feet, reduction of side setback from thirty-five feet to five feet, and reduction of right-of-way from forty feet to thirty-eight feet. These are some of the proposed home elevations. Pictures of the subject property, and then pictures of the adjacent property. So staff recommends approval of rezoning from R M ten and R M fifteen to R M ten conditional for the development of twelve single-family units at a density of seven point five units per acre with the following conditions. Condition one regarding the composition of the architectural components. Two, for all utilities to be underground. Three, for protective covenants on all the lots and HOA. Four, for screening of the detention area. Five, developers responsible for any traffic improvements. Six, regarding a strip of brick papers at the entrance. Seven, for prohibiting of debris buried underground. Eight, to comply with the city's tree ordinance. Nine, regarding the tree, tree plan be prepared by a landscape architect. Ten, requiring all yards and common areas to be sodded. Eleven, regarding the tree schedule, tree planting schedule. Twelve, starting with the special conditions regarding the setbacks, as previously mentioned, front of twenty-two, side of five, rear of fifteen. Thirteen, requiring a minimum length driveway of twenty-two feet. Fourteen, for right-of-way on Church Street dedication where, where required. Five, installation of curb and gutter and sidewalk where required. Sixteen, providing the provision for a crosswalk. Seventeen, to expand Church Street roadway when necessary. Eighteen, regarding the maximum structure height of thirty-five feet. Nineteen, they'll have to meet all fire access requirements. Twenty, all water and sewer requirements. Twenty-one, all stormwater management requirements. Twenty-two is, the property will be subject to the site plan submitted with the application. Twenty-three, they'll be bound to elevation submitted with the application. Again, we recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Staub's. Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Keith, do you have any questions for Mr. Staub's? All right. At this time, we'd like to ask for the applicant or applicant representative to come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan. Good evening and welcome. Mr. Sams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I represent the Martinello Group concerning this application for rezoning, and I have with me tonight Mr. Christian Martinello and Mr. Joe Romano, who are partners in the deal, seated right back there with their, with their raised hands. So they'll be here to answer any questions that you've got, as well as me. We've been on the phone a lot in the past couple of weeks with, with our engineers, so I think even though our engineer couldn't be here tonight, I think we can handle any questions from a technical perspective. It seems like a lifetime ago, but we filed this application on Valentine's Day, February the fourteenth. Typically, we'll get before you in a, in an April hearing and a, or maybe even a March hearing in a situation like that. Obviously, that didn't happen. After we filed it on February fourteenth, we, we continued the case on, on March the third in order to tweak the site plan and do some things typically to get, to get ready for a final review by staff and submit stip letters, but, and then COVID hit. So on March twenty-fourth, we sent a letter to Rusty and his staff just saying, we'd like to indefinitely continue the case. I mean, indefinitely, meaning until hopefully we have a handle on this pandemic, number one, and I don't know that we do, but number two, so that we can understand the market a little better and make some revisions to the plan that we earlier filed back in February. Originally seen as properties on a preponderance of it, R M ten, you know, any developers or builders' eyes is looking, ah, ten units per acre, multifamily apartments, look across the street at Medland Apartments, and this is not the area for apartments. This, this is, and your staff said it very eloquently, and I'll get to it in a little bit, but this is, this is a piece of consequence, this, this piece of property. It's a pivotal piece. It's owned, as I said, R M twelve, a small portion of it's owned R fifteen. Our original plan showed fourteen units as townhomes and attached type, type product. We felt after we sat back and before we reactivated things a month or so ago, that the community would be better served, staff would be better pleased in terms of a land use planning perspective, and, and we would present a much more palatable proposal to the, the neighborhood with whom Mr. Romano and Mr. Martinello have, have met. Joey has always did a good job of teeing this, this up for you, but what I'd like to do is tell you just a little bit more. It is a one point six acre tract. There are three homes on there, single-family detached homes. They, they will be demolished assuming an approval of this. The unusual part of this property, as I've mentioned, is most of it is R M ten. I don't know the genesis of that. I suspect it was sometime around when the, the multifamily on Medland across the street on Love got, got approved, but, but I don't know for sure how it became R M twelve or, or ten, but it is. And as Joey mentioned, that's typically for multifamily configurations when you have buildings that are usually nowadays with construction standards being what they are, about, about a max of four or five stories, and sometimes you see them higher than that, either surface or structured park. In this particular instance, though, what we're asking for is really more of a down zoning, because at R M ten, you can get ten units per acre theoretically, even though a portion of this is, is, is R fifteen. So basically, right now, as it's presently zoned, we did a plan that's workable. We get two less lots, but, or two less residences, but that, that's if we, if we zoned it as it is, but there's also the possibility to rezone it to an R M ten, but it's just in a transition step downstage to go from the sixteen and a half units per acre, which are the Medland Street Apartments, forget the name of them, sixteen and a half units per acre to our seven plus units per acre, and then to the, the R D A subdivisions that are on the other side and around us, which are single-family detached, but at a much lower, lower density. So on August the twenty-fifth, we, we reinitiated our discussions with the staff. We submitted our site plan that you have before you on August the seventeenth. I would like to make one point of clarification. Mr. Staub's did say that staff is recommending approval, which is, which is correct, but I think he said subject to the site plan submitted with the application for rezoning, and so we, 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 we obviously have surpassed that. So we, if you do see fit to zone as a part of your motion, and of course, we're allowing Mr. Martin, Mr. Staub's to tell you, but we prefer it be subject to the, the site plan, lesser density with a detached product that we submitted on, on August the seventeenth. Let me tell a little bit about the product and, and what we've got here. These are going to be twelve custom quality-built homes, a couple of them spec, some of them custom. They will range in size from twenty-five hundred square feet up, upwards, depending on, on the market and the upgrades, of course. Three to four full bedrooms, two and a half to three baths. Price points, and I know they're not a condition or stipulation zone, but you look at the price points in the neighborhood, and you look at, at the size of the, of the, the homes that we'll have, and so price points will range from four fifty to five hundred and fifty dollars and up. The architectural styling composition will be complementary to the area. You were shown two photographs. There's also some other photographs that are attached to the stipulation we did back on August the twenty-fifth. All the homes will have two, two-car garages, room enough to park two vehicles at all times there, another two vehicles in the, in the driveway. The, the homes, of course, you, you can't be better located in terms of accessibility to the city and Market Village and the amenities and, and the cool things that are offered here, literally within, within walking distance. And we think this addresses the, the city's policy of advancing single-family detached homeownership within this central business district. And I know a CBD or Market Village, you know, it usually contemplates a higher density or maybe even retail development, but this piece is just simply not, we think, appropriate for that. All these homes will be for sale. They're not going to be, not going to be leased. There'll be a mandatory HOA, so the documents for that HOA will be submitted during plan review, and typically, they go to your city attorney for review. Usually, when mandatory HOAs are set up, they need a certain number of houses in order to make them sustainable. With, with twelve, we think that, that's doable. The third-party management company will handle the day-to-day affairs of an HOA, because, believe me, civilians such as me and others in homeowner situations are not always sophisticated enough to handle the, the, the day-to-day aspects of running it. Really, it was a corporate authority. And so they handle all the HOA monies. They make sure that the HOA is properly insured, and then when the time is right, then they turn it over to the homeowners. We'll be submitting a landscape plan during plan review, and one of the things that when Joey showed you the site plan, he showed you the positioning of the, of the detention and stormwater quality pond. It's linear in, in, in shape. I talked with the engineer a little bit less than an hour ago, because I, I knew it might come up, but the, the wall that will be a tendon to the detention will be anywhere between five to seven feet in height. It'll be what's called a form filler type thing. It's, it's masonry in appearance, so it can either be stacked stone or brick or masonry, or some of the entryways you've seen maybe recently in the city of Marietta or even in the city here of Smyrna, where it's very nicely done. But in terms of detention, we'll also use as a component for that and water quality landscaping and the wall. So it'll be virtually invisible to neighboring property owners, and the wall will be decorative. It's not going to be imposing or, or out of line with the, the existing topo or the contours of the, the property in the, in the area. The city engineers made recommendations regarding hydrology, stormwater management, downstream considerations, and of course, the ultimate configuration and location of onsite detention. We submitted a preliminary conceptual report as we were, were asked to do. Also, of course, that'll be finalized before the meeting, before the mayor and city council in terms of verifying points of discharge and other, other items of water quality. The fire marshal, really, is one of the first times I can remember that I haven't had a, a request for us to submit a turning model in terms of the, the fire apparatus being able to, to, to make the either interior or exterior movements to get in and out of the subdivision. So Mr. Grubau and his staff are fine. The Community Development Director and his designee and/or his designee, there's always a situation when you haven't fully engineered a plan and you're before Planning Commission or Mayor and Council, where you'd like to say it's going to be perfect with this site plan, but we all know that with full engineering, site plans have to be tweaked from time to time. So we're simply asking that So we're simply asking that Mr. Martin or his designate be able to make certain modifications, not to increase density, not to increase height, not to get into buffers, not to grant any variances, but if we need to tweak something in the site plan, because otherwise, I think it's considered as specific to the site plan. If you've read your staff analysis and your staff notes, and I quote from there, it says, "Community development believes that the special conditions of this particular tract are a unique opportunity and an overall benefit to the city." Well, obviously, we agree with that. And having to back off from, in our own conscience, what is good land planning principles, we think we have provided the transition, a step down into single family detached with a little sort of an intervening, a little more of a density. So we simply ask that you recommend to your mayor and city council that the application be approved as recommended by your staff, Mr. Chairman, and is presented to you this evening. Thank you. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sams. Any questions for Mr. Sams? And if you'll just give me one second for Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so we just had a question about the private drive. Like, why'd you guys decide to go with a private drive instead of a public road there?
Private streets worked better in terms of the size of the property, and it just made more sense, since we're going to have a mandatory HOA, we're going to have significant resources for the upkeep and maintenance of that. It was a decision based on that, really, nothing more or less than that. Streets are being built to the city's design, detailed specifications in all respects. They're just going to be private. And I don't know, I don't think they've got plans to gait this. They're not gaiting it.
Any other questions from, I got them. Hold on, just make sure we get them up here first. Any other questions up here? Tom? Keith? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Bentley? All right. Mr. Bentley, you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, yeah, hold on here. Looking at the surrounding property there on Church Street and what the other houses are, this project seems inconsistent to me with the character of the surrounding homes. Most everything there is, I think, R fifteen or R E D, but there are single family homes that face Church Street. And the land use map is medium density residential, which would call for a maximum of six units per acre. We're going seven and a half here, so the density seems high. And I know that there are several new houses that have been built along Church Street there, and they all face Church Street. And so that seems like a better plan for this property than doing this stub street in there. Do you have any comments on that?
I just heard, I didn't hear a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley.
Well, I just made a statement. I just asked if you had any comments on any of that.
Yes, sir. I think this is a city and state a unique opportunity to take advantage of a property that could otherwise be developed at ten units per acre, so at seven and a half units per acre, it is the perfect transition to...
All right, I didn't hear the answer there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bentley. As I was saying, we were faced with an opportunity of thinking through a ten unit per acre project with and taking into consideration the sliver of it that's zoned R fifteen. We certainly thought the ten units per acre was pushing the envelope, even though there's sixteen and a half units per acre, less than thirty feet away. We just felt like it was an appropriate transition, and we met with staff, and staff gave us some direction on the best manner within which to proceed. And of course, this is less density under this proposal than was originally filed back in February. I mean, we literally can develop the portion of the property that's zoned R M ten to ten units per acre.
He's got another question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Keith.
The hammerhead at the end of the street. I assume a city trash pickup truck or recycling truck coming in there is going to have to make a three-point turn down there, is that right?
The standard for us, Mr. Bentley, is the pounds per square inch of the pavement itself and the radii that are involved in the turning movements of the public safety vehicles and the fire apparatus, which are greater in size than the sanitary service trucks. I don't know how many backups or what they would have to do, but Mr. Grubau, the Fire Marshal's department, didn't ask for a turning model and didn't ask for any changes other than this revised site plan with respect to interior maneuverability or accessibility. Keep looking over here like he's over here. Just don't know where to look when I'm talking to Mr. Bentley. I'll just look to you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley, however you are, hello. We miss you.
I think Mr. Bentley just said touche.
My question really relates to that hammerhead, and it's just like, it seems to me it would be better off with a cul-de-sac there, so that the city service vehicles could come through there without, I mean, I know if I lived in one of those houses on the end, I wouldn't want to sit there with trucks backing up all around my house.
Okay. Is there anything else?
The only other comment, the units that are, the houses that will be closest to Church Street, those look to me like they're going to face the new street and with the side of the new houses facing Church Street. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, it seems to me it would be a better streetscape if those houses faced the front, faced Church Street with a side entry garage. I think they could be reconfigured to do that without affecting the number of units or anything like that.
They looked at that configuration, as did staff, and we settled on this. I may have to defer to Mr. Martin as to the reasons why we settled on this, but orienting two houses that are in direct opposition to the orientation of the others, just, it looked odd. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bentley, is how it looks from Church Street. I get that, but maybe Rusty can respond to that, because I frankly don't recall the ultimate manner in which that decision was reached as to the orientation of those homes.
That would be a question to your clients, because we didn't design the site plan. We only reacted to it.
Well, you want to talk on that? You want to? Mr. Romano is one of the principals of the Martinello Group, said that he felt like from an aesthetic perspective, not exactly his words, but he'd say it looks better this way and is complimentary in more ways to the houses in the area than orienting the two houses. You're talking about Mr. Bentley to Church.
Okay, Keith, is there anything else you'd like to ask?
No.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Bartlet?
A couple. Just with regard to those lots, six and twelve facing Church Street, I think what we're trying to tell you is we want you to respect Church Street a little bit with the frontages. And so all along Church Street, the front of the home is facing Church Street, you're going to interrupt Church Street a little bit more than maybe we would hope if you turn your side on this out parcel that you're, you know...
Sure, well, we can, we certainly...
It's something that we would like to y'all look at, just asking you to look at it.
No, no, Mr. Bartlet, Mr. Bentley, both made good points. I'm sorry, I just didn't know how we ultimately got to that position, but apparently it was an aesthetic one, but if it's logistically workable, we've certainly got time between now and the mayor and council to do just that and to look at the reconfiguration of those.
And did you do a layout with the cul-de-sac? Was that part of the study?
We did, there were seven different iterations of this plan. We started out with multifamily, and I don't think we ever had a cul-de-sac that was workable because of the width of the land. We certainly didn't at fourteen, and we didn't at twelve. In other words, we lost, we'd lose two more lots.
Right. We were talking internally, and Chairman Powell brought up, there could be some real traffic issues with people either inadvertently turning in and then having the hammerhead at the end of the cul-de-sac, or if there's a, if there's a tree down or an accident at Mann Street, people are coming in and having some real interaction issues. It's kind of unusual for the neighborhood to have this type of an infill with a hammerhead versus the cul-de-sac. If you look just aerial views, even next door with the neighborhood, having that cul-de-sac at the termination.
Our threshold position when it comes to the design of the streets is always in deference to the Fire Marshal, and he signed off on that. I don't guess it's really, Mr. Bartlet, just for sake of being devil's advocate, I don't guess there's much difference if someone's going to turn down there, whether it's a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead, they're going to turn down there inadvertently.
I'm sorry, I'm saying the interaction of a second car.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, okay.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. All right. Mr. Sams, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'd like to clean the podium, and this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Now is that time. Please come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record clearly, and sign our sign-in sheet at the podium. And you can or cannot wear your mask, whatever makes you feel better.
I moved to 1102 Church Street last April. I left Smyrna Grove to get away from being surrounded by homes, and I bought that lot because there's so much trees and it's peaceful back there. Joe did come meet with us the other night. I don't have a problem with it, but I do like what you all said about those first two facing to keep it consistent. I just want some kind of guarantee that, and they said they would, I want some kind of privacy all the way down my back lot, because I don't want to be looking at six homes, people in their backyard, not a four-foot Leland Cypress, but an eight-foot Leland And as long as they're willing to work with me to get what I want, I don't have a problem. But another concern is the increased traffic. Church Street has become the Audubon, especially with Wendy Hill now. We have no speed bumps, and now we're going to add even more traffic. But I just would ask that, I guess, I don't know, they said they would work with me, so I don't have a problem. I just want to ensure that I get my privacy that I have right now. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thanks for coming out. Anybody else in attendance that would like to come forward, speak in favor of or opposition to the application? Now is the time. Good evening and welcome.
My name's Evan Sturgis. I live at 1105 Church Street, almost across the street from this development. I don't have any issues with the zoning change. I've got a couple of questions that need more clarification. When we did meet with the gentleman proposing the plan, it was our understanding that there was going to be an above-ground retention pond, so just have a question, why that would not be more efficient underground as, you know, storm chambers and a water detention vault? And also with the thought of screening it for aesthetic purposes, excuse me, I don't believe is all that more cost-effective if you were to look at making that change. Comments on the architecture of the house facing Church Street? I believe the layout, as it's currently shown right now, it's, I don't believe it to be disruptive to Church Street, but I do think there's ways from a architectural design to enhance those first two houses coming into the street, maybe with some sort of, you know, more corner or curb appeal, you know, with a porch of some sort, but I think architecturally that could be addressed. And then the last item, I'm always concerned about the hammerhead driveway. I just, I don't think it's a good precedent to set for any sort of infill density development. So I would, I'd be curious to see what a cul-de-sac would do for the development. How that affects the density, I don't know, but I think that's worth exploring. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgis. Anybody else in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Good evening and welcome, Mr. Carter.
I'm Eddie Carter, and I live at 1085 Church Street, which is directly in front of this development, which Joe and Mr. Martinelli were very gracious to come meet with us and explain it to us. But I'm extremely impressed with this group up here, and firmly believe it needs a cul-de-sac, and really like the idea of the two houses facing forward for the aesthetic purposes. Really concerned about how people are going to get out of this private drive as it's a blind hill, but that's it. Thanks, guys. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Is there anybody else in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? By virtue of the numbers in the room, this is probably the last call. Okay. Are there any other comments, questions for the applicant? All right. The public comments has ended at 6:50. Any other questions, concerns, discussion?
Can we, can I, can we ask the applicant?
You can ask the applicant, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, applicant, one more time to just comment on the cul-de-sac, and just if that's an option that y'all would even approach as it evolves to council?
Absolutely. The cul-de-sac and the repositioning or reorientation of those two houses, we've got essentially four weeks, more or less, to do that, so we can, we'll certainly do that, no problem.
Well...
I'm sorry, is that what you were asking?
That was.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Much appreciated. And thank you guys for meeting with the neighbors. That always helps our, helps us on this side, that you guys have actually put forth the effort. You know, I go a long way back with Mr. Romano. I do want to echo some of the other concerns about the cul-de-sac. Church Street is a very busy street. It's not going to get any less busy. It's not going to get any less busy. People are screaming up that hill as fast as they can get to spend some money at a couple of restaurants in the Market Village, maybe buy a pizza. So, anyway, really appreciate you guys coming out tonight, all the public comment. I would like to entertain a motion for this item.
Keith, would you like to make a motion on this request?
Uh, yes. Um, we have to, we're up here, we, we have to vote on the project as presented, and I think we've heard some things about some changes that would be beneficial here, but based on the project as it's presented, I'm going to make a motion to deny this zoning request, Z20004.
We have a motion to deny it. We have any second? We have a second, Mr. Bartlet? For those of you in favor, please vote in the affirmative. The motion is denied, 7-0. I do think what we've heard up here is some minor tweaks to this plan would probably make go a long way to getting you guys through mayor and council for approval, so good luck to you. Anyway, all right. The last item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 10th, 2020 We need a motion to accept the minutes as presented. We have a motion. Mr. Seagraves, we have a second? Thank you, Henrietta. We have a second? All in favor of motions of the minutes as presented? Please vote. Mr. Bentley, do you vote on the minutes as presented?
Keith, do you have a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes? Or I mean, not a motion, but a, there's a motion to approve right now.
Yeah, I'll vote to approve the minutes.
All right. We have a motion to approve minutes 7-0. All right. One final item tonight. We want to welcome J.D. Smith. We, in, in the COVID-challenged times, we've, haven't had all of our meetings this year, but we've had several without representation from Ward 5, and so we're pleased to have Mr. Smith join us.
Heather Corn, City Clerk. I just wanted to let the board know that as of Friday and Monday, we have a new interim city administrator. Police Chief Joe Bennett is serving in that position, and he has assigned Penny Mosheri, who is our current, what is her title? Special Projects Manager. She is our interim assistant city administrator. So if you see them roaming the halls, please feel free to welcome them to these new positions. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Ms. Corn. Much appreciated. Thank you to staff, officers, thanks for coming out, keeping us safe. We appreciate you more than you know. Any other comments? All right. This meeting is adjourned at 6:55, and next month, I'm bringing a hammer. I'm going to break my phone.